Welcome, October 21st, 2013, 6:30. Agenda item number one, please join us in the Pledge Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Agenda item number two, roll call, please.
Counselor Carrasco.
Present.
Counselor Clemens.
Present.
Counselor Landyman.
Present.
Counselor Manna.
Present.
Counselor Markucci.
Present.
Counselor Moriarty.
Present.
Counselor Nicola.
Present.
Counselor Peliquin.
Delayed.
And Counselor Vandal.
Delayed.
Thank you. Eight here. I mean, seven here, two delayed.
Thank you. Agenda item number three, consider and accept a town council meeting minutes on Monday, October 7th, 2013. Any discussion, corrections? Seeing none. Show of hands, please. Thank you. I would ask the council if they would help, we'd like to make amendment to bring seven in under presentation, bring the EDC Clark University Higher Education Information Exchange to make that 3A.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Clemens.
Yes.
Counselor Landyman.
Yes.
Counselor Manna.
Yes.
Counselor Markucci.
Yes.
Counselor Moriarty.
Yes.
Counselor Nicola.
Yes.
Counselor Carrasco.
Yes.
Seven yes.
Thank you, council.
So, Mr. Chairman, perhaps I'll do a, just a quick overview. I had the honor and the privilege to greet a delegation of higher education officials from China. I think last Monday, or the Monday before, they are doing a tour of Massachusetts. And through the efforts of Otto Prohaska, a member of our EDC, they are staying at the Southbridge Hotel and Conference Center. And they'll be there for, I believe, for about three weeks in total is the tour in which they're trying to find out about our area and the Boston area and Worcester area in particular. But we do have a presentation, if I could ask Otto to come up with a member of the delegation so we could read a proclamation.
First of all, welcome to Southbridge. Chinese Higher Education Administration in partnership with Clark University, whereas local leaders, higher education officials in China and the United States seek to develop a greater understanding of each other. Whereas the following discipline are represented to explore Higher Education Administration, professional training programs, and university research funding, development and commercialization in the affiliation with Clark University and the Economic Development Commission in the town of Southbridge. Whereas we hope that this is the beginning of a long journey. Whereas the delegation seeks an opportunity to increase its knowledge and expand its future business in the United States. Now therefore, the town of Southbridge recognizes, appreciates the delegation's desire to visit our community, and we look forward to continuing relationships with Clark University and the higher education program. The witness set in hand of this council seal is to be affixed sincerely assigned Town Manager Clark, and it is tested by our town clerk, Madeline Douse, date October 21st, 2013.
We're going to have a translation. A lot of the members of the delegation only speak Chinese. And I should have mentioned earlier that this is in cooperation with Clark University that this is being done, and I believe it's a Clark University student that does the translation.
Dear Mayor, ladies and gentlemen, good evening. Tonight, the leaders and guests hold a grand welcome ceremony for us in Southbridge. I just stands for all of the students in our class, sincerely thanks for your enthusiastic reception. In China, we had heard that Southbridge has beautiful views, but the more beautiful thing is the people living here. Wherever we've been, we were greatly impressed by your enthusiasm. In this regard, we thank you again. And we'll always remember that we have a deeply friendship. We wish that our friendship will last forever. Thank you very much.
We usually have professional translators. Today, they left already, so we use whoever can speak English the best. And that sometimes is still difficult. We all walk around with these hats. We got so graciously from our town manager in the beginning. So we make a little propaganda when we tour Massachusetts. Actually, we visited WPI. They told us how they do commercialization of inventions. And we, by coincidence, ran into the president of WPI. And he was excited that we all had these red hats, and he thought, this is great, this is WPI color. What is this S? Where does that come from? So, but I wanted to tell you, we have a very important group here. They're all universities, they are representing 15 universities in China. And they are very interested in how we, here in Massachusetts, do commercialization. How we get funding for research, how we turn the research into development, and then bring it out into the general population. An increasingly important part of the responsibilities of universities. They started with teaching, tell others what we know, then research came in, find out what we don't know. And now we're trying to take that, what we discovered, into new products. And hopefully, this will help us to fill all the empty spaces we have. And we're working on that. But the friendship we are building might work. And thank you so much for your generosity here, taking the time to say hello to them. They're all very excited about that.
Just on behalf of the council, I just wanted to show the gift. I want to make sure that I follow protocols. I asked permission first. But it was a very thoughtful gift. Thank you very much.
I'm going to give a five-minute recess, so if councils, please, would like to go introduce yourselves to them, get up. I think that'd be a great thing. Counselor Markucci.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. During that recess, I would ask if they would give us the honor of taking a picture behind us?
Absolutely. It's a proud moment, so absolutely. So we're going to take a five-minute recess, go introduce yourselves, and then we'll take a picture, maybe in front or something like that.
Right.
Thank you. Meeting's now back in session. Thank you very much. I will, yes.
Yeah.
Otto, if you'd like to say a few more things.
Thank you so much. From the feedback I got already, everybody's really excited about being honored here through you. And I also wanted to tell you that they appreciated a welcome basket where different businesses had contributed. The Sturbridge, Olsterbridge Village, the Yankee Candle in Sturbridge, and also, what was it? The Chamber of Commerce in Sturbridge. And from Southbridge, we got from Dexter Russell, and from the Savers Bank, and Big Bunny's put the whole thing together. When they came and found these huge baskets, they were extremely happy about it. So this was a good start. And then we had extremely good lectures and visits. We visited Clark University, WPI, and also Tufts University. And during these discussions, the presentations and the discussions subsequently, the question came up, how we could work together. And so we already put the seed in the ground for collaborations that hopefully will turn also into products and startup companies. And I will see that we expand what we have in Worcester, Massachusetts biomedical initiative incubators. Hopefully, we can spread them out a little bit, including into our area. We also will see MIT and Harvard, so they get to know what's going on here, and how the state and how the federal government supports commercialization. And hopefully, this will be just a starting point. We will then have a tour of the historic Southbridge on Friday. We'll come back to the town hall here. And then we have a gala dinner prepared, and we'll have it in the Art Center. It will be organized and sponsored by the Art Center. And we will have guests from the Republic of China consulate in New York. We will have also a representative of the fastest-growing province in China, Shandong here. He's a businessperson, and we'll see how we can exchange businesses. There is already a company settling in Auburn from China. And so I am very hopeful that this sooner rather than later will be to benefit for all of us. And we would like to invite all of you, and we'll send out invitations to come and join us for this final dinner. Then you have a chance to talk to them in more detail. Thanks again. That was really generous from you and all, everybody who was here, to take the time and speak with us and honor us.
Thank you, and thank you again. Certainly, go ahead.
She's ready to translate on the spot.
Absolutely.
So I will translate in Chinese.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay, we are going to move on to subcommittee reports, number four, General Government.
Council on the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A meeting of the General Government Subcommittee was held on Tuesday, October 15th, in the George Parent Conference Room. In attendance were myself, committee member Counselor Vandal, and citizen members Holly Cristo and Michael Janes. Also in attendance were councilors Landyman, Carrasco, Clemens, Peliquin, Manna, Town Manager Clark, Roger Cowett, Estelle Cowett, Adrian Lamoreau, Richard Clemens, Patricia Clemens, Paul Servant, Louise Stryker, Susan Latour, Paul Parent, Rick Clemens, Irvin Deck, John Henry, Ron Plouffe, Jim Latour, and Lenny Vigno. Councilor Moriarty was excused. I called the meeting to order at 7 o'clock. Agenda item number one, vote to approve the appraisal submitted by Allied Appraisal Associates of New England in the amount of $9,800 for various appraisals, including airport property on Commercial Drive and property the town will obtain as a result of foreclosure, and to submit to council for ratification. Funding to come from the preparation for sale of town-owned property account number 003-5899-123-9062. Thank you again for coming. Mr. Clark, explain the properties that will be covered by the appraisals. This will start the process for selling town-owned properties. A motion was made by Counselor Vandal and seconded by Michael Janes with a favorable recommendation to council to approve the appraisal submitted by Allied Appraisal Associates of New England Incorporated in the amount of $9,800 for various appraisals. Vote by a show of hands, all in favor, four to nothing. Agenda item number two, general discussion on the positive attributes of locating a municipal airport within the town of Southbridge. Mr. Clark stated the Mass DOT and the FAA were invited to this meeting, but the FAA could not attend due to the government shutdown, and he didn't know why the Mass DOT had not come. Mr. Clark reviewed the expense and revenue portions of the airport lease. Irvin Deck from StanTech gave a presentation on the master plan overview and the airport redevelopment. Mr. Clark said that in 2004, the town had an administrative consent order, which we still do not have control of, and are now coming to a conclusion of acquiring the land needed. The solar farm is also part of this land. John Henry from StanTech spoke regarding the airport redevelopment and what is required if the airport were to close. Counselor Clemens asked if there is water at the airport. Mr. Clark said there is water there, and they are working on the sewer infrastructure. Mr. Clark stated this meeting is part one of an informational meeting the council has requested. He will return with part two in the short future so that council has the information to make a decision on the airport's future. A motion to adjourn was made by Counselor Vandal, seconded by Michael Janes, vote by a show of hands, all in favor, four to nothing. We adjourned at 8:25 PM. Respectfully submitted Evelyn Rivera, recording clerk. The night after, Wednesday, October 16th, another meeting of the General Government Subcommittee was held in the George Parent Conference Room. In attendance were myself, committee members Counselor Vandal, Counselor Moriarty, and citizen members Holly Cristo and Michael Janes. Also in attendance were councilors Landyman, Markucci, Carrasco, Clemens, Manna, Town Manager Clark, and Mindy Ernst Funier. I called the meeting to order at 7 o'clock. Agenda item number one, vote to approve the health insurance renewals for two Blue Cross Blue Shield and Fallon Senior Plans, effective January 1st, 2014, through December 31st, 2014, and to submit to council for ratification. Mr. Clark said these are the plans for the seniors. Two of the plans have approximately a 19% decrease. And the Fallon Senior Plan had a 0.3 increase, sorry, a 0.3 decrease. Mr. Clark explained that these decreases are due to the fact, no, sorry. He explained that these decreases are due to the amount of claims submitted. A motion was made by Michael Janes and seconded by Holly Cristo with a favorable recommendation to council to approve the health insurance renewals for two Blue Cross Blue Shield and Fallon Senior Plans, effective January 1st, 2014, through December 31st, 2014. Vote by a show of hands. Vote by a show of hands, four, for this and one abstained. Agenda item number two, review and discuss the town manager's goals and objectives for FY two thousand fourteen through two thousand fifteen as identified in the town manager's contract and to submit to council for ratification. Mr. Clark said he had come out with a fairly extensive list of goals and doesn't see why more things were added. I said that some of the items on the list are not town manager goals and objectives, some are department goals and should be removed from this list along with others. Ms. Cristo said goals should be suggestive with a measurable goal. Several counselors spoke regarding their understanding of how the goals and objectives were to be addressed. Mr. Clark said he would like to see five to eight measurable goals and then sit down and determine which would be attainable in the allotted time and within the budget restrictions. Mr. Clark went through the list and informed the council as to the stage each item was in, what was feasible and what was not. Direction was given to council to number their top five goals with a value of one to five, one being high priority, five being least priority, and submit to the town council chair. A motion to adjourn was made by Counselor Moriarty and seconded by Counselor Vandal. Vote by a show of hands, all in favor, four to nothing. This meeting adjourned at eight forty P.M. Respectfully submitted Evelyn Rivera, recording clerk. We had a general government subcommittee meeting scheduled for this week. It will be postponed and I will be providing a date for that in the near future. And that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Counselor. D.P.W., Counselor.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, no, no report and no meeting schedule. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. C. Education and Human Services, Counselor Mike Huchi.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. No report, but we do have a meeting scheduled for October twenty-ninth. It is at six P.M. It's a joint meeting between the town council and, well, our subcommittee and the school committee. And I also added another agenda item with the recent resignation of the school chair. There is an open position, so we will also be discussing that at the meeting. And that is at six P.M. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Moving on, D. Planning and Development, Counselor Clements.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do not have any minutes for this evening. And once again, I encourage the general public out there to pay attention, go online for when the meetings and what the agenda items will be so that you don't miss out your opportunity to speak at these subcommittee meetings. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. E. Protection and Person in Property, Counselor Moriarty.
Thank you. We don't have the meeting minutes for it as yet. However, the PPP Subcommittee did meet Thursday, October seventeenth. The only agenda item that was discussed was animal control operations and, and in deference to, to not misspeaking or misremembering any of the night's discussion, I'll defer until we get those minutes and I'll read those at the next council meeting. But again, that's the only agenda item that was discussed. There was one other agenda item originally planned for that night, which was to discuss and review the police department management study recommendations. And that meeting will take place on November nineteenth here at Town Hall. And that is the next currently scheduled meeting for that committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Moving on to agenda item number five, Chairman's announcements. I have a few this evening. Just reminding all counselors, I did receive a few this evening to pass in your goals and objectives so we can actually proceed, follow this and vote on it at the next council meeting. The other thing is just a reminder, Southbridge is having a flu clinic. Get your flu shot, you're healthy, it's worth a shot. The date is Thursday, October twenty-fourth, two thousand thirteen, ten-thirty to twelve noon at our Southbridge Community Center on one fifty-three Chestnut Street. It's open to all Southbridge residents two years old and up. Flu masks will be available for eligible children and adults ages two to forty-nine and RN will screen them. Adults age fifty and up will receive the flu shot. Please bring all your medical insurance cards, including Medicare. Then they basically said on this flyer, it says, no insurance is not a problem. So I would ask the citizens of Southbridge, take advantage of this, this is a nice little program, to protect yourself for the upcoming flu season. If you have any additional questions, this is sponsored by Harrington Memorial Hospital and the town of Southbridge. You can please call five oh eight seven six five eight one nine six or five oh eight seven six four four two five two for additional information. Also, just again, information for the town, to remind everyone, Halloween is coming up. It will be on the thirty-first for the town of Southbridge. As usual, we will have our Famous Horribles Parade leaving Wells Parking Lot at five o'clock, so make sure you get to the parking lot early, they'll line you up, and then the parade will start, proceed down to the common, and they will hand out some goodies. And then from there, from five-thirty to seven will be the trick-or-treat hours. Just reminding everyone, for safety reasons, please wear some bright clothes, have a flashlight and, you know, have an adult accompany you. Mr. Clark, is that on the scroll? I just, can we make sure it's on our axis? To remind, I believe he said he's going to put it in the paper too, but just if we could follow up on that, I appreciate it. Let's see. Also, just a reminder that we are also doing our curbside pickup for our waste, leave waste. Just make sure you, again, put it in paper, paper bags, no plastic bags, please. Grass clippings, leaves, no logs over four feet and branches and stuff, it's all acceptable, but please put it in a nice pile and they will go by and pick that up. And that will proceed into November. And then just a reminder to the general public, again, we're coming into, it's getting dark early and stuff like that. I did speak to the police chief, he just wanted to let everyone know they are enforcing speeding, it's a reminder. They're going to be forcing that and they're also going to be forcing the click-it-and-ticket program in town. So just as a friendly reminder, please slow down so no one gets hurt. And I'm sure like a lot of other councils, we see this a lot daily, so they will be passing out tickets on this. And that will be it for my announcements this evening. I will move on to number six, Town Manager's announcements. Mr. Clark.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do have three this evening. The first one is from National Grid. National Grid will be performing replacement work on gas mains and gas services in the neighborhood of fourteen to fifty Worcester Street, two to sixty-five Charlton Street. The tentative start date is, was today and the approximate end date is November eighteenth. The work will occur during normal working hours of seven A.M. to five P.M. Monday through to Saturday. And National Grid customers will have a scheduled time period for the transfer of services to the new main where there will be a short interruption of gas service. For this process to be completed, our technicians will need to access the existing gas meter and service. Let me see, if there's any questions in regards to the project, you're more than welcome to call National Grid Customer Service, twenty-four seven, at one eight hundred two three three five three two five. Also, we received, I think it was last week in the, in the mail, that the United States Army Corps of Engineers, if folks remember, probably about two years ago, two and a half years ago, they had some concerns about Westville Lake Dam and some issues with seepage. They have completed a, an exhaustive study and at the end of that, they have come out and basically determined that the dam can be operated in a minimally, minimal risk to the public. So it actually basically is, I think, is a good sign that the dam was not as damaged as they had originally thought and it is safe to continue in normal operations. And then I didn't get a chance to put it in the packages, but I know Councilman Vandal has been very patient in waiting for the information on the property sales, so I do have that this evening to, to distribute. And just to kind of read some of it, the town has had as part of its development or redevelopment, a sale of various properties. Sixty-two Pleasant Street, a former town garage, actually closed on the tenth, so I think it was last week, or the tenth, a few weeks ago. And then one fourteen Pleasant Street has also closed. We sold both of those in, at prices above the minimum that was in the RFP. The combined total of those were three hundred and eighty thousand dollars the town received for those two properties. We did receive conditional bids and hence it's been a little bit longer of a negotiating process, but the conditional bids were on one fifteen Marcy, the, the, basically the daycare facility, eighty Marcy, the former junior high or middle school. That one we are negotiating. Hopefully, we'll have that resolved fairly soon. And then seventy Foster Street, we do have a condition bid on that. Because of the nature of the condition bid, it has taken longer than anticipated to resolve these and come to final conclusion, but we have two out of the five complete. And then we do have also, we're in negotiations trying to square away the purchase and sale on the triangle lot piece on Commercial Drive. We don't have on this list, but we did sell approximately five acres for over a hundred thousand dollars on Commercial Drive that is, has been sold to Midstate Welding. And that will be, they are beginning, beginning stages of development, they've been clearing the lots. So I think that's a fairly comprehensive status report on where we are in the compensation that the town has received or potentially will receive through the sale of those properties. That concludes my report this evening, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to agenda item number seven, swearing in and presentations. We will move to Make Southbridge Home Initiative. Spencer Curry, the intern. Welcome.
Good evening. We will have the projector coming down in a second. Let me just hook this up.
Certainly.
Maybe while he's setting up to, to give him an opportunity, we have been continuing our efforts with Make Southbridge Home. We were involved in a partnership with a movie producing company that did produce a video, which I think we'll show this evening.
Oh, we don't, we don't have the sound hook up for the video tonight, but it should be available in the coming weeks online.
Okay. Well, to be, to be determined, it will be announced later.
Yeah, this is a teaser trailer right now. So thank you for taking the time to listen to what I've been doing here. I've been working the last couple of months as an intern for the town manager and with the, on a number of projects, including Make Southbridge Home, during which I've worked also with Rose Canoyer in the economic development and planning office. So thank you for them. So first, I'll be covering sort of just an overview of what Make Southbridge Home is very briefly, but emphasizing on the survey that we are having. So what is Make Southbridge Home? Among other things, it offers discounts and promotions to home buyers looking to relocate into Southbridge. We are participating both to town with financial institutions, real estate professionals, attorneys, and local vendors. Once a home buyer has settled into their new home, they should be receiving a package from Make Southbridge Home. Getting ahead of myself here, here we are. Both with information on the town and with coupons to local vendors, both as a welcome to the community and also pointing them in the direction of local businesses. And a number of those packets were actually mailed today by myself. As my hours windle down here, I get everything done in one day, so if you haven't received it, don't worry, it's on its way. The campaign is also through conversations with our participants begun to branch out, considering programs which serve generally as a campaign for promotion of the town itself, not purely through homeownership, but through factors that will lead to increased perception of the town and thus increased homeownership. Something such as homeownership or a reputation or a school system are not issues that can be improved overnight, as you know, but rather require a far-sighted approach and cooperation from all parties involved. And I think that this is a good step in that direction in terms of homeownership in the town. And one of, one of the ways in which we are looking to start looking forward for a longer-term project is through a survey. A survey both of recent home buyers for which we have mailed out survey letters, again, some of them today, so they're on their way. And also, we would like to open up to the citizens of Southbridge at large. Some of the questions are more relevant to people who have recently moved to Southbridge. I'm sure people can use their discretion in answering those questions. It can, they can be accessed online at the site provided here, surveymonkey.com/s/makesouthbridgehome. I will say, the site was chosen as a host because it is inexpensive and is very easy to operate, very easy for us to tabulate the results. And paper copies are all, will also be available in the Economic Planning and Development Department. So as I said, I would like to invite council members, anyone in attendance right now, and all citizens of Southbridge to partake. The survey is completely anonymous, it requires no names, addresses, or any other identifying information. Any questions you don't want to answer can be skipped and most of all, your feedback is greatly appreciated. The survey is in large part for us to understand the housing market and what home buyers are interested in moving to Southbridge by seeing who has come here. We have a better idea of where to look in the future to find people who are looking and interested in moving to Southbridge. And the survey was created with consideration for the International City Management Association Guidelines. A report will be coming in the following months. The survey will be accessible for about two more months at this point, so there's plenty of time to get in. And we would like to have a few reminders along the way from now to then. I'll take this opportunity to open up the site itself so you can take a look at it. If you go to the website, this is what you will see, very simple. It only takes five to ten minutes to complete and hit next. Here, I'll, this is just a preview, very easy to fill out, only four pages long after the opening one. So just to prove it really exists. So just a little more information on the Make Southbridge Home project. We do look forward to meeting again with participating institutions as we did a couple of months ago, generated some good ideas. We look to expand our online presence. Like to thank Cable has already started putting more videos online available for people who are searching Southbridge, such as department reports, and we look to see more of those videos online in the future, expanding what people can learn about Southbridge online. The survey, as mentioned, welcome packets, and also an idea for the two-hundredth home buyer. As Southbridge approaches its bicentennial, we thought a nice activity in conjunction with the bicentennial committee would be to celebrate the two-hundredth home buyer since the Make Southbridge Home campaign has begun. We are approaching, the numbers are a little up in the air, we're not there yet. We want to make sure it's people moving to Southbridge or getting a new home instead of just a transfer of deed, say. So the number's not set in stone at this point, but it is something we're looking forward to doing, as well as an example of expanding the bounds of what Make Southbridge Home does. This is an idea of Southbridge stories that the bicentennial committee is embracing in a couple of different ways already, before I even presented this to them, in terms of getting material from Southbridge citizens, getting people to talk about the town, what they like about the town, what their experiences here are, and expressing it through something like a logo design that's going on, that was going on previously, and perhaps photography throughout town. This is an idea that clearly, we're a couple of years away from the bicentennial, so there's a little time to think about this, but it's under the general idea of people generating a positivity surrounding the town of Southbridge and of Southbridge and getting this sort of message out there, getting the word on Southbridge up. And I would just like to thank some of our most recent participants. We have more than this, and we expect more. But these are people who have made it a priority most recently to keep up with the funding. Our funding comes purely from our participants, and we thank them very, very dearly. So Alcoin Ryan Realty, Center of Hope, Clarence H. Knight, Cormier Jewelers, Mary Chabot of Coldwell Banker, Merrimack Mortgage, Morse Lumber Company, Inc., Remax, Savers Bank, Southbridge Credit Union, and Southbridge Savings Bank. Thank you very much for your support of the town of Southbridge in this endeavor. And again, it's surveymonkey.com/s/makesouthbridgehome. We will be publicizing this more, but word of mouth is really the best way for people to learn about this. So if you talk about it, mention it, no matter what you have to say, we're interested in what you're thinking. And just as my time here in Southbridge comes to a close, I would like to offer a final thanks to those I've worked with in the Town Manager's Office and Economic Development, and all those who have helped me in the Town Hall. I've gained an appreciation for Southbridge for lunches I've had here and people I've worked with. And I found from everyone, town employees, our partners in Make Southbridge Home, and everyone who I've interacted with, that the, the binding factor between everyone is really a desire for the well-being of the town. And I've seen a tremendous amount of caring and love for the community. And that's why I think regardless of whatever roads lay ahead, that Southbridge will continue to persevere and will keep growing. And I'm proud of my time here, and I hope you're all proud of the town. It's a great place. Thank you.
Thank you, Spencer.
Thank you. Any councils have any questions or anything? Councilman Mann.
I'd just like to say thank you and good luck in the future. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Councilwoman.
Just curious for any business perhaps that's watching this evening who might want to become involved and get, and participate with Make Southbridge Home campaign, what's their route? Who should they contact?
They, it is a part of the Economic Development and Planning Department, so contact there, though basically anywhere in the Town Hall will direct you in that direction.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Councilwoman Nicole.
I'd just like to echo Councilwoman Mann. I thank you very much, Spencer, for all of your hard work on this project and everything else that you've done. We appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Seeing none, again, thank you, Spencer. All that, all that you've given us to the town, believe me, we know Mr. Clark has a full plate and stuff like that, so these things that you bring forward to us means a lot. So we thank you, and we look forward to seeing you in the future.
Thank you very much.
Next agenda item is, it's been a lot of, a lot of hard work, a lot of time. They've done a great job, but now we're going to actually have the master plan presentation.
Good evening, everybody. Can you hear me okay? Well, I'm about to introduce two of the members of our consulting team that were here with us over the past two years, or two and a half years actually, to work on our master plan. It has taken two years, it's a pretty intense effort, very public effort, and I learned a lot through it. And one of the things that I learned was just how important a master plan is. You now have copies of the master plan, which was adopted by the Planning Board in September as is required by Commonwealth of Massachusetts General Law. I think that one of the things that you can think about when you think about a master plan is that you can compare it to a journey. When you're starting out on a journey, you always want a plan of where you're going to go and a map to tell you how to get there. And along the line, along the way, if you have a roadblock, you might have to change a little bit. Or if you see an opportunity to stop and see something and partake of something cultural or nice, you would make provisions for that also. While a master plan is like that, only what it is is a plan and a roadmap to take the town into the future. And without further ado, I would like to introduce Daphne Politis and Brian Barber of Community Preservation Associates.
Thank you, Sandy, and thank you, members of the council. As Sandy said, we came here about two and a half years ago, and for all of us on the consulting team, it was the first time we'd ever been in this town. And since then, we've had the privilege to get to know Southbridge, to get to work closely with the people of Southbridge, and frankly, to get to care about it too. This has been a very intense process, and it has lasted about two years, and that's usually the amount of time a master plan lasts. But we spent a great deal of time here, talking with people in all sorts of ways. So we really appreciate this opportunity to give you an overview of what we found. And we thought we'd just step back for a moment and talk about why do bother master plan? So in addition to the fact that the state encourages it, and if one has a master plan, they're more eligible for funding, it also provides you with an opportunity, once in a generation, to take stock. What is it about Southbridge that people really care about? What is it that they really are concerned about? And what is it that they want to change? And these things change because conditions change, demographics change, and so you need to do that once a generation. It's also an opportunity to come together around these common values and to try to harness the energy that people have about wanting to, to make a better future. And so, once you start the process, you want to keep it going. You want to keep that momentum going, and that's one of the things we want to talk to you about, about how to do that. The way we approach doing a master plan, it's really three steps. The first one is creating a vision and a set of goals. What is it that you want? The second one is doing an inventory of your existing conditions. What is it that you have? And the third one is developing an implementation plan. How do you get from what you have to what you want? So that's sort of the general outline. And I wanted to give you a few snippets. For the visioning, we actually held ten public forums, and we held them in all sorts of ways. We held them in, you know, the traditional way, Town Hall, schools. We also went to the Big Bunny. We stood outside the post office. We went to the Senior Center. We met with the senior class at the high school. We met at Southbridge Community Connections. Ten different places, collected input in English, in Spanish, and we really tried to understand what is it that most people care most about? And I'll just read to you a few of those subjects. This is some, these are the things that came up in every single forum. More activities for youth. Improve the school system and restore its reputation. Bring different cultures together. Improve the downtown. Improve the town's reputation and itself image. Relocate the welfare office. Deal with the absentee landlords. And we need more shopping and dining options. That came, those came through all across. What people most appreciated about Southbridge? The diversity of the ethnic groups and cultures, institutions such as the library and the hospital, police and fire, concerts on the common, and the downtown. These are just a few. What people seem most concerned about? Empty storefronts in the downtown, the welfare office, lack of public transportation, lack of activities for youth, divisiveness of the community, racism, the school district reputation, the lack of participation and apathy, the town's reputation. So you're starting to see some themes emerge. We developed a series of six goals. These goals were to promote health and wellness, to promote education for all, to improve housing and neighborhoods, to increase economic development townwide, and improve the downtown, to ensure environmental sustainability, and to increase community pride. Some of these are common with other master plans we do, and some of them are not. We spend a great deal of time trying to understand the special features of Southbridge, what makes it unique, and its special needs, if you will. So then we conducted this inventory, and we identified Southbridge assets and asset, and Southbridge has a great deal of assets, more than we were led to believe by people living here in many cases. We found some very lovely features. Beautiful open spaces, grand historic buildings, the Westfield Dam, walkable downtown. The people, people that we've met and that we work with were, for the most part, wonderful and positive. We did hear a lot of concern about people who were negative. And that negativity is not, is not something that's, Southbridge is alone in. Communities that have similar historic and socioeconomic patterns become frustrated when they feel they've been at a higher place and they've fallen, they feel disappointed. And there are things that we came to consensus about what people would like to do about that. So that's also included in the plan. And then we developed, and so the plan has really two prongs, to look at the assets and preserve and enhance those. What makes Southbridge unique? And let's make sure that those are preserved, those are enhanced. And what makes Southbridge a challenge? Those need to be simultaneously addressed, and some of those are difficult. Some of those challenges are difficult, but there needs to be this two-pronged approach, work on preserving the assets while simultaneously addressing the challenges. And those are all outlined in the plan. The implementation plan, we developed around the six goals. We developed objectives and strategies to, to achieve those goals. And we did this by holding ten roundtables. The roundtables were around the goals. We invited residents, but we also invited people who are specifically dealing with those issues, whether these be town officials, social service agencies, institutions, the business community, and people from outside the state and outside experts, so that we could make the strategies meaningful and useful and most relevant to Southbridge. Because we could just talk about them in, in general, but we wanted these to be strategies that would be relevant and that people felt would work here. And at those roundtables, people started to form partnerships, because one of the things about implementation is the capacity to implement. It can't be a theory, it has to be doable. So people started to form partnerships, and that's something that the plan encourages a lot. Public-private partnerships, partnerships among agencies, and people need to work together towards these goals. So we hope that these roundtables around the six goals will turn into working groups that will continue to work together, or at least some of them. The other thing we did was identify what we call ripe apples. Those are the low-hanging fruit. Because now that we've spent two years doing this, we don't want people to think, okay, here's another plan, just put it on the shelf. And in this case, it's three volumes, you could use it as a stepping stool. We need to keep the momentum going and, and to show that, that something will come of this, even if it's small steps in the beginning. And there needs to be some sort of honor to the people that took the time to give their thoughts, to come, to talk to us, to think about it, to share their ideas, their concerns. We need to honor that, and we need to keep the faith in the process, keep faith in the fact that there can be some change made. So there, there are, as you can tell, there's a lot to the plan. It's many, many pages long, so we've tried to encapsulate it in an executive summary, which we hope you've seen. And the volume one is, is basically the heart, which is the implementation plan, and it summarizes the rest. Volume two is the inventory, which identifies what your existing conditions are and assesses those, begins to look at opportunities and challenges. And volume three is a compilation of all the public input. All of that went into the plan, into the implementation. So again, we'd like to say, we, we really promote a focus on youth, making sure the youth are involved, this is about them after all. But also, youth can help to bring the adults along, they're a little more flexible, they can absorb new material and change behavior. And the need for increased communication overall, making sure that things are in multiple modes, in multiple languages, because this is about bringing the community together and moving forward, and fostering faith in that ability to move forward. So like Spencer, we too have felt a lot of positive energy here. And like Spencer, we too have learned to care about this community, and we leave the plan in your capable hands and hope you can harness this energy. Thank you.
Thank you. Any councils have any questions? Councilwoman Maureen.
Just more so a comment. Having gone to a number of the, the master planning meetings and roundtables and such, I thought it was, it was pretty well done from everything I saw, having obviously not gone through it before, but there were a great number of different people from all kinds of different backgrounds, and I thought that was great. And, and I for one, kind of look at the master plan itself and the feedback that we've gotten from the community. Granted, it's, it's still a small percentage, but it's the, it's the small percentage that bothered to take part. So to me, I kind of look at it as, as a referendum or a mandate from the locals, from the people who put us up here. So I just kind of want, that's something I keep in mind as this process goes forward, that the things that are listed in there from the residents of this town as, as being the bigger issues or the bigger priorities to, to address, should be, in my mind, our bigger issues and our bigger priorities to address as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, I, I do thank you for this plan, and I wholeheartedly agree with you. This, going through this process, and it's been a long, intensive process, and I got to give you guys kudos, you did reach out very well across the community. And the people that really do care about the community showed up and expressed their concerns and stuff. Now it's going to be up to this body, and future bodies, to try to move forward. Now we know some of this is a dollar, we know, we know that. But then there's some of this, as you did say, that's low-lying fruit that we can proceed forward. So I, I do agree with you, small steps, but to put this on a shelf and do nothing does nothing for the town of Southbridge. So I do appreciate all your hard work in reaching out to the community and looking forward to taking some of this stuff on and moving forward. So I thank you for your time.
Thank you, and keep us updated.
Okay, moving on to Agenda Item Number Eight, Citizens Forum. Is there any citizens that would like to speak on anything that's not on the agenda tonight? Just, I ask you to please state your name and address.
Hi, Maureen Doyle, seven-seven-one Lebanon Hill. With the great presentations we've had today, I hope people are inspired and psyched to be, want to get involved in the town. There's a number of seats on boards and commissions. I'm on the Conservation Commission, and I know we have three available seats, and other boards also have seats available. I'm not exactly sure, so I don't want to say them. The Conservation Commission has been a good experience for me. I've learned a lot about politics and got to use some of my agroecology bachelors. And if you have any interest in protecting wetlands, or in the ecology of the area, or other things in the Conservation Commission, please consider joining CONCOM. And if you want to get involved in other ways, please do some research, contact the Town Hall, and see what the other boards are, and what, what they're involved. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak before the council tonight that is not on the agenda? Seeing none, we will move on to Agenda Number Nine. Vote to ratify the appraisal submitted. Vote to ratify the appraisals submitted by Ally Appraisal Associates of New England Corp. in the amount of $9,800 for various appraisals, including the airport property on Commercial Drive and properties the town will obtain as a result of foreclosure. Funding to come from the preparation for the sale of the town-owned property account Do I have a motion?
Show moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion on this? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Counsel Landjevan?
Yes.
Counsel Manna?
Yes.
Counsel Makuchi?
Yes.
Counsel Moriarty?
Yes.
Counsel Nicola?
Yes.
Counsel Pellequin?
Yes.
Counsel Vandal?
Yes.
Counsel Carrasco?
Yes.
Counsel Clemens?
Yes.
Nine yes?
Thank you. Agenda Item Number Ten, vote to ratify the health insurance renewal for two Blue Crush and Blue Shield infallible senior plans effective January 1st, 2014 through December 31st, 2014. Do I have a motion?
Show moved.
Second?
Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Counsel Manna?
Yes.
Counsel Makuchi?
Yes.
Counsel Moriarty?
Yes.
Counsel Nicola?
Yes.
Counsel Pellequin?
Yes.
Counsel Vandal?
Yes.
Counsel Carrasco?
Yes.
Counsel Clemens?
Yes.
Counsel Landjevan?
Yes.
Nine yes?
Thank you. Agenda Item Number Eleven, Council's Forum. This evening we'll start with Counsel Clemens.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I had a feeling you might do that. Just, just one thing. I realize that it's only October, but if you go into pretty much any store, you'll notice that a lot of the holiday season decor is, is being put out and really just kind of getting us in the mood for what goes beyond. Of course, you have Halloween, you've got Thanksgiving, and somewhere right after that, we've got the full-blown Christmas holiday, Hanukkah, and all that wonderful holiday season, as we've come to know it. Many of you are aware that we try to get, Citizens Group tries to get together and decorate the town. And it's not too soon. I was there today visiting our workshop, and Rudy was hard at work getting things ready. So I am making a plea out there. If you are interested in participating in some way, perhaps you've got some time to help paint a few wooden trees. Perhaps you just have a little bit of time. On a weekend coming up in November, we usually spend at least two weekends, a Saturday morning, a Sunday morning perhaps. You don't have to give all your time. But if you can give a few hours, one of the weekends that we'll be advertising and you would like to help us out, please get in touch with myself, (508) 764-7642. It's my home number, I am in the book, so you can certainly look me up. Also, Counsel Manna is instrumental in this endeavor, so I don't have her number off the top of my head. But we will be posting this information on the Cable Access, and it'll be in the newspaper, how to get in touch with us. But we would love to get some new faces and keep our old faces. It's, it's a really great time, and you put so many smiles on the children out there and the adults alike. So we hope that you'll join us this year and really make a difference for the community during the holiday season. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Counsel Manna?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I got a phone call a few days ago in regards to some bricks coming up along Main Street, along the side where Village Photo would begin and going down. Somebody tripped, and they assured me they did not hurt themselves, but they were concerned because of the bricks were coming up and the cement. So I took a walk up there, and I actually took some pictures, if you'd like me to email them to you. But it does appear like some of the, the cement is lower and the bricks are higher. And you could see some bulging in that area down there. And I, I walked the opposite side, and it's pretty much more even than that side. So I didn't know if maybe somebody could take a look at that. It seems it could be a possible safety issue.
Mr. Chairman, through you, we are aware, you're talking about the, I think, the cobblestones?
Yeah, the cobblestones.
Yeah, I, I actually, every once in a while, go out and walk to try to get a sense. I know that we have, in the Community Development Block grant, we've done some design work to see how to take those out and replace those. I think, if I remember, I see Mrs. Ackley's here in the, in the crowd, so if my memory is wrong, she'll, she'll correct me, that I think that because of the way the sun hits, we have, tend to have less issues on the north side and more issues on the southern side, basically in front of Village Photo. So we are aware of that. We're in the design stage, and the next stage will be construction, to actually remove those and put in a similar type treatment to have that be an effective replacement. So we are aware, if there are things that are coming up on a more urgent basis, what I will do is I'll make a note and I'll have DPW look at it to see if there's something that we can alleviate in the, in the short term.
Okay, thank you. And also, while I was up there walking and looking, I noticed there was trash. And there are plenty of trash cans along the sidewalk and whatnot. So if you just remember to take your trash and put it in the trash cans. And also, we, we know about the leaf pickup for the citizens, the residents of Southbridge, and it begins on 21st. Do the same rules apply for the business owners in town? Because over the last couple of years, I've noticed that there are some business owners that will take their leaf blowers and just blow the leaves into the street. And I just want to know what the proper protocol is for the businesses.
Yeah, I honestly don't. I, I think that they're obligated to remove them in a, in a safe way. I think the business owners probably could take some of the smaller materials up to our, the facility up on Gulfwood and deposit them up there. So they do have options, you know, options. I think a lot of business owners will use private contractors, and the private contractors have their methods in which to remove the, the various debris that, you know, leaf and twigs that get picked up. So I don't know if there's any, I will check to see if there's anything in addition to that. But I think those are two options that are fairly traditionally, traditionally used.
Okay, thank you. And also, if you do need to get ahold of me for Christmas, my phone number is (774) 2300156. And also, just a friendly reminder, like Chairman Landjevan stated, Halloween is next week. Watch out for the ghosts and goblins, and happy Halloween to all the kiddies out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Counsel Vandal?
Thank you. Down at the gazebo, the Town Common, there's a poster of, I don't know what you call it, a sign. It shows the school what it's going to look like when it's complete, and the school's been complete for quite a while. Maybe we should think of removing that board? Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you, Counsel. Counsel Pellequin?
Two things. First of all, I'd like to apologize for my lateness this evening. I had a family emergency come up, so I apologize for that. The other thing is I'd just like to thank everybody who's contributed books for, Books for Treats this year. We'll be taking donations through the 29th, just to give us a couple of days to finish sorting them out. And you can drop those off either at 275 Marcy Street or at Thai Orchid Restaurants on Charlton Street. And that's it, thanks.
Thank you, Counsel. Counsel Nicola?
I have nothing this evening, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Counsel Moriarty?
I've just got two quick things. One is more so a request through you to, to Counsel Vandal for, if at all possible, this week or the following week ideally. I've had a couple folks, admittedly on my own street, that are concerned with, with progress or lack thereof between the town and the, the bank that owns the development in terms of going forward. Appears there's an impasse and/or a miscommunication or misunderstanding between the two entities. And rather than having the neighborhood come up to speak tonight, I suggested I would ask you to put that together as a meeting at some point, ideally, if possible. Secondly, more so, just wanted to thank Otto Carrasca for, for the, the work that he's done. Otto also happens to be a neighbor of mine a couple doors down, so he's also involved in that street issue too. But, you know, I had talked to Otto several months ago when he first told me about this potential for a Chinese delegation and a number of just great possibilities that, that could come to fruition if, if, you know, we play our cards right and things go our way. So I wanted to thank Otto and, and everybody else who helped make that happen, happen tonight and for the future. And, and having known Otto for a little while now, it's, he's, he's one of the, the good people in town where it's, he doesn't worry about why should we do something? But it's, Otto is definitely a why not kind of thing, why shouldn't we? He's, for those who know him, he's, he's a scientist, very smart guy, and certainly has that, that inquisitive mind and doesn't think that anything's impossible. So I wanted to thank him and encourage him to continue with what he's been doing and everybody else. It's similar to the master plan, there's so much that we can get done, so long as we try. And far too often, over the years, when I covered the, the town for the newspaper and as a citizen and up here, far too often you hear people kind of say, well, that's just not going to work. You know, we tried that before, it won't work, this won't work. And ultimately, you know, personally, I just kind of get tired of, of the talking about it and the inaction when I don't have a problem trying to take action. May not work out, and that's fine, but, but as far as I'm concerned, and I think Otto did a great job, take those leaps of faith every so often and try to make some positive progress for the town and for ourselves. And that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Counsel Carrasca, and I ask you if you could please read that flu thing in Spanish, so the Spanish community will be aware of it also.
Absolutely, I was going to make that part of my announcements. So I just want to read it in Spanish. La comunidad de Southbridge va a tener una clínica para la gripe. La fecha es jueves, el 24 de octubre, de diez y media de la mañana hasta doce de la tarde. Y va a ser en el centro de la comunidad de Southbridge, 153 Chestnut Street, aquí en nuestra comunidad. Está abierto para todos los residentes de dos años hacia adelante. Adultos de más de 50 años van a recibir la vacuna. Por favor, traer todas las tarjetas de seguro médico, incluyendo Medicare. Y también, si no tiene seguro, no hay ningún problema. So le deseamos que vayan y participen. Este en colaboración con el hospital Harrington Memorial y nuestro pueblo. Si tienen preguntas, pueden llamar al 508-765-8196. O 508-764-4252 para recibir más información. My other announcement, I just want to thank the town manager, Mr. Clark. During one of our discussions early this year, prior to me being elected, I wanted to try to tap in and kind of bridge some of the gaps in between our Hispanic community. And it has come to our attention as a full council that the suggestion that we talked about is going to be happening. Our town employees here at the Town Hall will be getting crash course. They're not going to be experts, but they will be getting a crash course in conversational Spanish and also understanding the Hispanic culture. So I, I am very excited as we are trying to reach out to bridge that gap and bring more of a uniti, a uni, uni, unified, excuse me, front to our community. So I just want to let the community know that we are working hard to include not only the Hispanics, but everybody. So if you have concerns, this is our community, please call one of the nine counsel. And, and let's make, truly, we heard it today, let's really make Southbridge home, and let's provide a space for everybody. Again, so we are very approachable people, so just please give us a call, bring your suggestions. Not everything is guaranteed, not everything's promised, but we, we will try. And I just want to thank publicly, I want to thank Mr. Clark for reaching out to our retired Spanish teachers, which will be doing these classes. So thank you, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Counsel. Counsel Makuchi?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have one question this evening through you to Mr. Clark. Mr. Clark, on your weekly report, you had mentioned that you met with our Veterans Agent to discuss the monument in front of 114 Pleasant Street. And excuse my ignorance, that's a military monument, is it not?
Yes. One of the things that we realized when we sold that property, that on the property there was a fairly large stone with a plaque on it, I believe it was a World War I veteran. So I do have, Mike Trombley, our Veterans Agent, is going to find an appropriate location to move that to. We certainly don't want that on private property. So I hope at this point, preliminarily, that we will be able to move that ourselves or hire someone, hopefully fairly reasonably, to move that. I, I don't remember the location that Mike had indicated. But it was on public property, and now that it's private, we felt the need to have to relocate it.
Right. Obviously, the owner wants that removed.
Correct.
And you think it'll be our DPW department that would be relocating that? And do you have any ideas of where Mr. Trombley is thinking about?
He had, he had mentioned, again, just a preliminary idea, in the, in the cemetery over here on Oak Ridge.
Oak Ridge.
So I think that's what he had in mind. He was thinking about looking at, you know, trying to have some, some order to some of the monuments, so it kind of flows a little bit. So he was kind of headed in that direction. But he hadn't really fully made up his mind, that's why he hesitated to definitively say the location.
Okay. And just one more thing. I noticed in our weekly report, there were three departments that did not submit a report. Do you know why? I know, I, I understand the, our new Health Director, obviously, is still trying to get his feet wet and understand our community. But I, as a counselor, really look forward to the weekly reports because it helps us understand what's going on. And I just found it odd that we had three departments that did not submit a weekly report.
Yeah, it, it has become a, more of a significant issue. The town clerk is an elected official, so she kind of participates on a voluntary basis. But I believe this time it was the Fire Chief and the Board of Health. Officially, the new Health Director doesn't start until Monday, so he officially isn't on board yet.
Okay.
But once he is on board, we'll make sure that, that he gets into the system. And we will, you know, I always hate to do this because you hope that you just lay it out to people and they get it. But we will put in, you know, some punitive elements, because I sit and I do my weekly report every single week. And if I'm on vacation, then it says I'm on vacation. But, you know, actually, my assistant does a great amount of it. I want to just put that out there, she's a great help to me. But we, you know, I sit down every week and make sure we get that done. And, you know, I, I think, I like to think I'm one of the busier department heads here in Town Hall, and certainly I think folks should be able to get it. But I appreciate you bringing up, because I think sometimes people think that maybe the council doesn't read it. And maybe that may be part of it, and it's important for them to know that people do read it, and it is important to have it in there. I will reiterate that tomorrow.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Agenda Item Number Twelve, discussion in the next meeting.
It will be Monday, November 4th, 7:00 PM, in the council chambers.
Thank you. Agenda Item Number Thirteen, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Show moved.
Okay. All in favor, show hands. Thank you and good night.